And Economic Development came out and they said, "Don't worry, we're going to meet with the neighborhood, we're going to speak to the community, and we're going to find out what they want to do." When is that going to happen? This is just moving forward, moving forward, and it's not going to happen. So anyhow, that's what I wanted to talk about. And then I read the articles that Mr. Mason and Mr. Burgess wrote today, and I am so upset with the mayor right now, and you guys should be, and the rest of the council as well. I mean, he, basically, he called you guys liars today. He, he literally did. He said that that's factually incorrect, the things that you said. Last week, when statements of "I don't know, I don't have the information," that's factually incorrect. They were given the information, they chose not to look at it. I'm sorry. That's the mayor of the town going to the press and saying that the town council as a group is a bunch of liars. If I have a choice who to believe, John Harkins or the eight of you, I have no decision to make. I trust you guys easily. He's also saying that people seeking to retain Center School are making decisions without information hastily. Okay, we don't have information. You guys want to get information. You want to do a study to find out the costs. That's how you get the information. No, we don't have the information right now. We don't know how the information from the Board of Ed about what they think they're going to need as far as classrooms in the future. But then he had the seriously Orwellian comment, which I'm trying to find here. I don't like to do this on my phone, but, um, I'm not finding it right now. I mean, that, that's basically it. He says that you're trying to make decisions hastily, but he's trying to make the decision hastily. He's trying to push this through. You're trying to get decis- get information so that you can make an informed decision. And I applaud that. And if you have all the numbers on the different costs and the different needs, and then you decide that this school is not needed, and the best thing to do is to tear it down, then an informed decision can be made. We don't have that information yet, and John Harkins needs to stop getting in the way of you people getting that information. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rieguskas. That's the end of the public forum since that's everybody who had signed up to speak. We can't do that according to our own rules, we can't. So...
Would be nice to...
So we're going to take an eight-minute adjournment. Yes. Mr. Rimkunis.
Go ahead, Walter.
Go ahead, Walter.
See what I mean? See what I mean? That's exactly what I was just saying, right? Got to give them a chance. They came out. Say what you got to say.
Hi. Good evening. I missed this. I didn't see it in any players around for a public address, so that's why I'm not here. Name and address. Well, I'll tell you. The name is Walter P. Rimkunis. Reside at 425 Second Avenue. Existing for eighty-six years as of last Tuesday. Okay, let's get down to serious business. Everybody's talking about we don't have information. Well, why didn't Mr. Harkins give the bobblehead doll the information when he got it about the Center School? I never saw, heard, or anything in the, or anything in the paper about anything at Center School until it came time for the, I can't think of the name...
Board of Ed?
No, not the Board of Ed. The train station group coming in, they need that property. First, he wanted to take the shopping center, and then he couldn't get that, so he went down and he took the, trying to take the school. Where was paperwork? Why does this have to be tore down? Show me the paperwork that required that we go for a grant. Did you see it? You've been here for a while? Six, seven months? Almost eight? All right. You haven't seen nothing? None of you have?
I've s- I've read the grant application.
You did? Well, you read the grant, but did you see the, any paperwork leading up to why the grant was applied for? I don't know. We were, people, us people, we're on a limb. I believe we crammed this year, the Board of Education crammed two units over there at Honey Spot. They took them out of Center School and they put them over there. I got it good. We crammed them over at Honey Spot, and we have a good building over here. We had to. After two years, the people were in there, they pe- working in there, and all of a sudden, bang, the roof, and everything's going to fall in. I'll get out of here fast. I believe that we go down and you get that RFP, check it out, if it's feasible, let's keep that. Tell those people, tell those, that bobblehead doll over at the Board of Education that they should hold on to it, not, they already did give it, but they should take it back and hold it in reserve because you're going to need it. You have Lordship School, Nichols. Help me out with the others.
Eli Whitney.
Eli Whitney, Benell, Stratford High School, all have auxiliary units. We need that extra space. We don't have it. We just gave, the, the Board of Education gave it up. We got to have something in reserve. If everything goes through on the way the real estate agents are pushing for in town, there's going to be a lot of kids. James Farm Road, Judith Park over here on Main Street. AFCO, that's one thing too. AFCO is eventually getting close. And we're going to have people going in there with kids. Where are you going to put them all? Tell me. Do you know? I don't. Somebody must know. We're going to hang them on a hook? No. Okay. You heard me. No tear down of Center School. RFP, find out how much it will take to renovate it, and I think we'll find out that it can be done cheaply compared to tearing it down and losing it and giving it away to the transportation people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are going to take...
Madam Chairwoman, I have something to say.
Okay, and then that's it?
Actually, what I would like to say is that unfortunately, the agenda that went out did not have a public forum listed on it. So a lot of people here were unaware that the public forum started at 5:30 today, including some of your council members, who showed up closer to 6:45. So what I'm suggesting is since you don't have a quorum, I believe, right now, that you continue listening to the public, that anybody that walked in for 6:45 not knowing there was a public forum, and if they would like to speak, that you all sit here and listen to the public. They came out, please sit here and listen to them. Thank you.
A good idea. That's a good idea. I like that.
Okay, then I will be, I, I'm afraid I will have to restrict everybody to three minutes maximum. I just want to let you know, though, there are meetings scheduled at 7 o'clock, and I was hoping to fit this in before those meetings, which will make... And one of our members is currently in another meeting, so is there anybody else who would like to speak? Mrs. Heimlich?
During today's 2:00 p.m. news conference, and who has...
How's that? Ooh.
Is that better?
Name and address.
Barbara Heimlich, 91 College Streets. During today's 2:00 p.m. news conference by Harkins, and who has a news conference at 2:00 p.m. when residents with children are at work? He stated, "Harkins noted comments from workshops held in 214, 2014 indicated the residents wanted more parking near the Stratford Metro Train Station, as well as more shopping and housing opportunities." This is true. We do want more parking. However, most of the residents in town were under the impression that this parking first would be a park, would be a garage where they paved over and took the buildings. I am in a domain. That didn't happen. And then we thought the abandoned Bally's Building, where consumers already park and walk, you see a nice path, to the train station. Harkins also said, "If you look around at how beautiful this parking lot is now, this is the future of Stratford, not that." Harkins said, and, now, now, Harkins said in reference to the Center School building, "Center School is the past." Really? You think, do you really think that we think a parking lot is beautiful? And do you really think this is our future? Parking lots? Has the heat affected your brain? Did you have a heat stroke? What are you thinking? To quote Joni Mitchell, "They paved paradise and put up a parking lot with a pink hotel boutique and a swinging hot spot. Don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you've got till it's gone?" Center School is the past, really? Neighborhood schools are in. The trend toward neighborhood schools is alive and growing. Last week, I sent an email to all of you esteemed council people, telling you exactly what I thought it was important. Some highlights is sending children to a neighborhood school can have large and lasting effects on their lives. A greater number of parents are willing to pay a higher price for homes in neighborhoods that have schools. Considering what our mill rate is, we'd be lucky to get them. Neighborhood schools are one of the essential elements to maintaining healthy and vibrant cities and towns, and their value stretches well beyond the traditional economic measures of dollars and cents. Situated among residential homes, neighborhood schools bring a vibrancy that can never be matched by schools located on the periphery of a community. Therefore, when a neighborhood school is closed for any reason and for any length of time, it has dramatic impacts on not only the students and parents, but also on the entire community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It being 5:00, 6:46, I'm going to adjourn the public forum. I'm sorry? And then we're just...
You'll go, Melvin?
Yeah, we're just going to adjourn for one minute, okay?
If you're adjourning...
We're adjourning...
I'd like to give some information while you're adjourning. Go ahead. Walter asked the question. I found out in looking at the minutes that the council in 2012 turned over the responsibility for testing in Testing Center School to the Greater Bridgeport Regional Council. They funded that test.
Yep.
And at the end of it, what they found out was that the oil tank leaked. They had no other comments, really, about anything that they found. And since we've already remediated leaky oil, oil tanks in other schools, this could easily be done. That was Phase One. And as I said, it was the Greater Bridgeport Regional Council, which is why you didn't, once, once the council turned that over to them, you, you didn't see it coming from We have an RFP right now. It goes back to November. If you look it up, that's the one that not only summarizes that 2012 test, but also goes ahead and declares what testing, which they call destructive testing. There are over a hundred holes they're going to drill in walls, in floors, in that school. So I thought I'd share that information with you before we continue the meeting.
Okay. That's nice. Go culture. I'll see you later. All right?
I understand, but...
Not understand. A little bit of a...
Oh, there he is. All right.
You can start, I mean, you can't take any action. Not really.
Yeah.
My must-do stuff.
I don't read it. Well, wait.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I heard.
I'm a fucking citizen.
I don't read it.
Well, wait.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I heard.
I'm a fucking citizen.
I'm a fucking citizen.
I'm a fucking citizen.
I'm a fucking citizen.
I don't read it.
Well, wait.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I heard.
I'm a fucking citizen.
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 Oh, yeah. Yeah, I heard.
I'm a fucking citizen.
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 Yeah.
Sure.
It'll be fun.
How you doing?
Good day.
Yeah, she's gonna give me a...
Oh!
I guess they take it out before the meeting.
There you are.
Thank you.
I call this meeting to order at 6:56. This is a special meeting of the Stratford Town Council, simply to discuss and to discuss Center School, Center School project. On that note, we will start with a prayer and a salute to the flag. I call on my colleague Vincent Chase for the prayer.
Oh mighty God, whose great power and eternal wisdom embraces the universe, watch over all policemen and law enforcement officers. Protect them from harm and the performance of their duty to stop crime, robberies, riots, and violence. We pray and help them keep our streets and homes safe day and night. We recommend them to your loving care because their duty is dangerous. Grant them your unending strength and courage in their daily assignments. Dear God, protect these brave men and women. Grant them your almighty protection. Unite them safely with their families after duty has ended. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Okay, thank you very much. The issue of Center School has come up. It was on our last agenda for the past two meetings. The Director of Economic Development has also been in our last two agendas. So on that note, I call on my colleague Phil Young to enter the resolution.
Whereas the Town Council has power to authorize a demolition of a town building, whereas the demolition of a school has long-lasting implications on educational opportunities for the town's population. Whereas the number of building permits has increased in Stratford, whereas the physical use of the center, of the center of Stratford has long-lasting implications to the town's reputation. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Stratford Town Council that the path to demolition of 1,000 East Broadway, aka the new Center School, be stopped. Further, a study will be conducted to determine the cost of returning the building to the use of a school.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. Discussion?
Yes.
Madam Chairman.
Oh, wait. Yes, Mr. Chase?
I think, I think Mr. Kadim was first.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kadim?
Thank you very much. I'm so glad that we're having discussion. Thank everyone for coming out. It's so important to try to keep this building open, school, to service our community. There's so many buildings going up now, so many apartments, especially right down the street. Forty-plus condos are going up. Where the kids are going to go, I have no idea. But keeping Center School open is a good thing to do. If you remember, those who come down for the council meetings, that we already had it passed, but they revisited it and didn't make it. So be careful how you vote and make sure that we keep this thing going. I hope that all of you guys stay, stay focused and stay tuned to try to make sure that us as your representatives do what we supposed to do. Can't let us get off. You got to let us do our job, make us do our job if necessary. We represent you, not ourselves. So it's very important to keep reaching out to your council people in your district, telling them what you want, because that's what they're supposed to do. We supposed to just do what you say you wanted to get done. Whether it's right or wrong, we don't represent ourselves. We represent you guys. So keep putting pressure on all of us to do our job. It's our job to make sure that our town keep flowing and do what's right in the sight of God, in the sight of all the people who live here, who have children, who have families, that they want to prosper and love. This is not a city. This is a town. We keep doing things in the mindset of building a city. We don't want a city here. If you want to move into city, New York is right there. Boston is right there. Bridgeport is right there. This is a town of Stratford, and I love being here. I love the town of Stratford. You know, everybody knows I'm originally from New York. If I wanted to be there, I'd be there. I like it here. I want to live in a town where you can walk over and say hello to your neighbor, watch their dogs on your lawn, say hello, love each other. I don't want to live in a city where it's so crowded you don't even know anyone, that you fear touching your bag when you walk across the street or walk outside your home. You want to live in a town where people love each other and treat each other with love and respect. There's really too much building going on. We need to back up a little and recognize that this is the town of Stratford, and let's keep it that way. And we have, even with zoning, and there's so much going on with everything that's going on. They're changing things. It's, got to stop it. Somebody need to come out and talk and fight and run so that we don't have the same people doing the same old business. We need to keep the town a town. I love all you guys for coming out. Thank you so much. And please, fellow council people, let's keep this school open. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Chase, thank you very much, guys.
Mr. Chase, would you like the floor now?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, it is important that the actual facts be put on the record. Loss of the grant to conduct Phase Three to determine the extent of hazardous waste, passage will mean town will be liable for the grant money already expended. Passage will mean that town will have to pay and determine the extent of hazardous waste. Bottom line, we will wind up paying double. It's been suggested I have a personal interest in Center School property, the extent of which is untrue. As a property owner, having a major development next to their property, of course, I have an interest in what's happening in my area, just like people did on, what is it, Homestead Avenue on the AAA proposal. You know, Madam Chairman, extreme elements in our town will demonize anyone who disagree or perceives to disagree with them. Without facts, but with innuendo, they practice the politics of personal destruction. They have no fear in dividing our town. Their pedantic tactics accomplish nothing but to promote an agenda to further their own political ambitions at the expense of the town and those who wish to serve honorably. Madam Chairman, it's been stated that I have a potential, I have a conflict of interest. I do not have a town conflict of interest. The town attorney has been consulted, and it is indicated that I do not have. However, however, since it's perceived that I have a conflict of interest, I recuse myself from this vote and remove myself from the council at this time.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to this resolution, if I can. The address of 1,000 East Broadway, named aka Center School, I believe that's incorrect. That is actually the address of the Board of Education offices. The correct address, verified by one of the Board of Ed members and also verified by the handy-dandy internet, is 55 Sutton Avenue, as recorded. So I think that that's the building you referred to. Am I correct?
In the grant application, it was listed as 1,000 East Broadway, that whole parcel. So, but you are, that's a friendly amendment, to just be perfectly clear.
Be perfectly clear what you mean. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second for the friendly amendment? Okay. All in favor of the friendly amendment?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion passes.
Madam Chair.
Seven to zero. Yes.
Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you all for being here this evening. And it was a quick meeting that was posted from last week. We've had this discussion, and so I'll be clear to my statements about this, and I thought it was clear at the last meeting.
Excuse me, is it a point of order? We're discussing the motion, and I'd like to offer an amendment, and I don't know if the...
and I don't know if the mayor should be speaking at this time. Could somebody please tell me that?
The mayor could speak. One making an amendment cannot interrupt a speaker, though. You cannot interrupt a speaker to make an amendment. If, that's your question.
He has the floor.
And the mayor has the floor, as the chair has indicated. She's correct.
I'd like to offer an amendment to...
I'm sorry, the mayor has the chair. The mayor has, I mean, the mayor has the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the questions that had come up was about the grant. And the discussion we had was regarding the future of Center School, whether it should be there or not. The resolution before us, if this passes, the money will go back to the state. I just want to be very clear on that, and you're looking upwards of $900,000. That's a grant that came to the town of Stratford that we applied for, that we worked hard for, competed with other communities, and won. That was actually a big deal. That Stratford won this because the state of Connecticut, the ECD, believes in what we're doing here in Stratford and thought it was a good project, similar to what they're doing in other communities, like in Milford and Norwalk and Stamford, where they're actually developing around train stations because that's where the market is. We're looking to bring in tax revenue to the town of Stratford, which will help alleviate the tax burden to taxpayers. That's called economic development. That's good. The parking garage, DOT was gonna pay for the parking garage, which is gonna provide parking for commuters to help alleviate our waiting list. That's a good thing. We just completed some expansion of our train station, and all we received is positive comments. That's something we're proud of in Stratford. We want to continue that progress moving forward, not going backwards. The Board of Ed has indicated they do not need this school. I had a discussion earlier with the councilman, and we talked about Honey Spot School, which is no longer an elementary school. So, the Board of Education actually has one extra elementary school right now. They have an elementary school that they're using for other purposes. And what we're indicating tonight is we want them to have two that they don't need. Two that taxpayers are gonna pay for. The same tax burden they're advocating for all the time, saying they pay too much in taxes. Don't you hear the cries of our citizens? Don't you hear that seniors can't afford this? I do. Question is, do you? We have a plan. We have a vision. We're trying to increase our tax base with development, not burden them with things that are extras that they don't need. The Board of Ed has clearly stated they don't need this. This council views it differently. Okay. So, what I would ask this council to do is at least get your facts before you pass this resolution. And I'll tell you why. I'll bring back Honey Spot School. When they did an analysis of Honey Spot School, when Victoria Soto was being proposed, before we named it Victoria Soto School, there was an analysis done between whether you should renovate that school or build new. The costs of doing both were fairly close, so the decision was to build new, to not renovate because the cost was about the same. So, that makes sense, right? You're building a new building. It's modern, suits the needs of what the students are required to have, the teachers have. So, the decision was to build the new Soto School, which, by the way, was about the same to renovate Honey Spot School. So, for example, if there is a decision, we get this huge influx of students, which, by the way, are not projected. Remember, population's declining in the state, but, you know, that's something you should look at, I think. But, say, population does increase, okay? I'll be a devil's advocate. And that you decide to look at the school and do your analysis. You know, is it a good idea to keep Center School? Should we keep it? And does it, what's the cost? And then you just look at the cost, and you decide, after we do the Phase Three, that low and behold, maybe the cost is the same to build new as opposed to renovate. So, you'd have to take the building down. This is sending back the money that would take that building down, over $900,000. But you don't know, because you haven't done your analysis yet. So, the question is, why are you doing this, handing back almost a million dollars, when you don't know what your plan is? The Board of Ed doesn't need the building, so it's gonna be boarded up. We have to secure it. They don't need it. They're not gonna use it. That's not a plan. So, you're basically providing what I call a spec building to the Board of Ed. You have a building that you're putting out there in speculation that someday they're gonna need it. Now, no one here sits on a Board of Education. None of you have anything to do with their curriculum, class sizes, planning. You don't. The Board of Ed does. It's a separate body than this council. You all know that. But the reality is, you now have this spec building that no one's gonna use. Nobody needs. It's just gonna sit there. And we don't know for how many years, because if student population declines, you may be looking at another committee to look at a school closure. Remember five years ago, they actually had a committee looking at closing a school? I do. So, I mean, if population declines with students, I'm just being a devil's advocate, just throwing it out there. But my point is, don't act on something when you don't have the information, because you don't know. And I'd rather be prepared in making a decision on such a large amount of money before just sending it back without having your information. And one thing I've asked of you is just do your due diligence. That's all. Why just react? You don't know. But you're setting this money back, which in the end can cost taxpayers more money if, in fact, you need to take the building down and set future time to keep it a school. So, I'm not even talking about any other development. I'm talking about if you decide to keep it a school. Why wouldn't you leave all your options on the table? What's the rush? It's over $900,000 that you're gonna send back to the state of Connecticut based on some reason that you have to act now without having all your information. So, that's my only plea to you here, is just to say, think of the taxpayers. If you decide that you don't want to increase the tax base and add a burden, that's fine. Some think that's funny, so I guess, you know, some people want to pay more in taxes. The people I do, I talk to, don't. They're looking for a plan. They're looking for some tax relief.
That's what we're looking to do.
No, no questions from the, is there more?
No, that's all. So, I just say, think before you act.
Thank you. Ms., I'm going to recognize Ms. Antezzo.
Yes. I'd like to make a couple of comments. In speaking about our taxes, I voted no, but anyway. The mayor said we need a tax relief, then he suggested that we give close to $8 million to the Board of Ed, which I don't even think they expected to get. However, I did some research, and I think I have the facts enough to make a decision. And one of the things I did is I went back 2009, 2010, to a committee that was looking, it predated the TOD people. And they never mentioned using Center School. But they did mention the Bally Building, the old movie house in back, where there's a pathway that goes right up to the train station, which is still a good idea for a parking garage. What I would like to do now is offer an amendment to the motion, and the amendment would be to stop Phase Three, which is destructive testing of Center School.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second for that amendment? All in favor of that amendment, say aye. Discussion?
Nick, can I just have, I want to make it clear for the record, because I know last time it was not, the last meeting, there were a lot of, I call them casual amendments made. I'd like just to, "Stop Phase Three Testing" is not a complete sentence. I think to make this proper, we have to put it in the form of a... Where are you adding that to the resolution? Are you adding a separate sentence to the end? And that Phase Three testing on the property be stopped?
Well, he has not, no problem.
It's already started. I just want to make it clear what your amendment is, just so we have a clean record for the clerk. That's all.
I'm sorry, Ms. Antezzo, I think you mean that in the main resolution, it says that the path to demolition of, now it's 55 Sutton Avenue? So, you would be adding that the path to demolition, comma, including Phase Three testing, comma, of 55 Sutton Avenue, AKA the new Center School, be stopped. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of that amendment, say aye.
You have to discuss.
Oh, discussion?
Yeah, discussion. It's interesting. When you come on board as a councilman or councilwoman, the information that you're supposed to get to vote, you should have. I didn't have any information about the testing, Your Honor, that you said that we have. I didn't get any information about the Phase Three or the grant at all. I did not. So, but simply recognizing that quality of life would change if it was a parking lot versus it being a school. No one wants to live next to a parking lot. And you bought a house, you saw a school, you said, "I love the neighborhood. I have children. I want them to go there." So, I know where Bally's old gym is at, right there. That's a perfect place to put as many cars as you want, because that is a center there that actually has parking, and you do have a walkway there to get there. I think that would be great. But in terms of the money, the $900, the $900,000, I mean, there's ways you get that money. I mean, there's so many raises that went on that Mr. Dumas pointed out that we can cut back to save taxes. You don't have to give everybody all of those raises either. So, I'm saying, I mean, we weren't about $900 when we gave 108, almost $108,000 to the Board of Ed. We ain't really worrying about money. We worrying about what somebody wants to do for whatever reason they want to do it. That has nothing to do with the $900,000. So, I'm saying, and then you say informed. I didn't get any information of the breakdown of the whole grant. I did not get that. So, you're saying be educated before you vote. We didn't get that before the council meeting. So, I'm saying, I respectively have to say that because I don't want to be unfair to you because you're doing your job and you're working hard to maintain these grants, get these grants, and I'm proud of that. But what I'm saying is, if I didn't get the information, you can't punish me like as if I got the information.
Thank you, Mr. Chase.
No, I didn't get the information. Where is it?
I'm going to recognize Mr. Llewellyn.
Don't do that. Don't call me a liar to my face, man. So, you just said I got it. How did I get it? Where is it? I don't have it. You know, I don't, you know, it's not like that for me. You know I have respect and love for you.
Councilman, I'll answer your question.
But when did I get it? I don't have it.
First, Mr. Llewellyn, and then the mayor.
Okay, just to clarify something. I believe it was in either December or January when we started discussing revising last year's budget. The Economic Development Office gave us all a flash drive. Contained on that flash drive is the grant and the paperwork related to what's happening at Center School. Just let me continue finishing. Then, just so that everybody knows where I am at tonight, my opinion has not changed since last Monday. I don't think we're in a position where we can make this decision. We need to acquire more information. I think it would be a tremendous black eye for the town for us to lose a million-dollar DECD grant. We're gonna go back to Hartford, ask them to support our community, ask them to support Shakespeare Theater. How is that gonna look for us reputationally? And how is that gonna look for us as a community when we go to ask Hartford for more money in the future? And we're making a decision blind. And I can tell you this from my experiences with Stratford High School. When you make the decision to replace this school facility, it's actually the Office of School Facilities up in Hartford who makes the decision whether you can renovate or you have to build new. And they plug all the costs into a formula, and they tell you how you're addressing that property and that school situation. So, that's all I have for now, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Llewellyn. We're just going to wait one second for the tape to be turned over. Our high-tech system here. Okay. And Ms. Manis?
We're talking about the entire resolution now, correct? Point of clarification?
No, we're back to the amendment, which was to stop the Phase Three testing.
Okay, I want to wait until we go back to the entire resolution.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
I just want to comment that if this amendment passes, the town is still on the hook for the Phase Three testing. We have a contract with the organization or the company that's doing it. They've already started the Phase Three, so the grant would no longer be in effect. The town would have to pay for that out of their own pocket right now.
Can I ask how much that is?
I believe it's $110,000, approximately $110,000. So, if this passes, that will cost the taxpayers $110,000.
And then is that the total damages if this, actually, we're talking about the amendment?
I said approximately. I don't know what the other, what other unintended cost there might be, but... So, I'm just warning you that if this passes, that's what's gonna happen.
Okay, but we're just talking about whether to amend the main resolution. Is there any more discussion on amending the main resolution? Okay, no, being none. All in favor of amending the main resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion fails, I'm afraid. Is that right? Because for amendments, does it need five or six votes for this? Given that we have such a small council here?
Under both the, your rules as well as the town charter, you require six votes to pass a resolution. However, an amendment to a resolution can pass with less, with a majority of those.
Okay, thank you. So, the motion, that motion passed, the amendment passes.
You are correct.
Okay, so now we're back to the discussion for the main resolution, now that it is amended to stop Phase Three and to, in the correction of the address. Yes, Ms. Manis?
I wanted to address a couple of the things I heard today and some questions that I have. Part of me agrees with Mr. Llewellyn that there's a lot of things I don't know about this project. It doesn't affect my decision, but it makes me question a lot of things that are happening in our town. As far as the contract that's happening, and I believe it's with Weston and Sampson, which is part of the, I wonder how much of this is all tied up with BRBC? And what are our connections there? And who and what is pulling those strings? I have a lot of concerns regarding big business and large corporations and being, coming in and kind of just maneuvering things in Stratford. I think that MetroCog is part of this. I think that there's the Metro North piece. We've got so many moving parts. Not that it's a bad thing, but it's an unknown thing, and that people in this town need to know. And I think that that's only fair they want to understand, and I think they have a right to understand what's happening, especially the people who live on Sutton Avenue. I want to address a comment that was made that Center School is the past. You're right, it's the past. But it's a great past, and it's Stratford's past. And the people that lived here and will continue to live here and aren't leaving here believe in our past, that's why they stay. There are people who drop into our community, educate their children here, and leave. That's a real thing that's happening. There are people that come in, they have a job here, they leave. But there are other people that stay the course, and it's because they love Stratford's history, and part of it is its past. The other thing I want to address is that we were called liars in the paper. I'm not a liar, nor am I any of the other names that you've called me. I'm none of those things. I don't lie to people. I just want to do right by them. I don't want to tell them half-truths. I don't want to tell them the full truth. And like Mr. Llewellyn said, we don't know what the end result is gonna be of that testing, and you're absolutely right. But we need to find out. The other thing that really concerns me about this whole thing is the fact that that seat for District Two is now empty. There is, there is no, there is no representation, as much as I love my Foster District, there is no representation for those people. And I lovingly call District Two Beirut, you know, whether it's Developments or Rhodes or Raymark or something, it all seems to have Shakespeare. It's all in District Two, right?
One.
Shakespeare's one, you're right. But it seems like it's all affected, the ramps, everything is District Two. And without a District Two counselor, I just wonder how well we can gauge the people and how well we can know what the people want. I feel the people want something. I know Mayor Harkins, you tried, but there's a disconnect here, and I don't know how to fix it. I wish I could, but you can't call people liars that the people trust. You can't do that. I know, I know Ms. Antezzo, I know Mr. Llewellyn, I know Mr. Young, I know Ms. DePonte, and I know Mr. Kadim and yourself want to do what's right for Stratford. Our visions of Stratford may be very different, but ultimately, we want to get to the same place. So, I hope we can do it together. I hope we can figure out some kind of amicable solution to this. I was hoping last week to put a date on it so that we could force everything through. I don't know, so that we could get everything done. But again, there's a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of big associations and things involved in this. There's a lot of people that are behind this that I don't like. So, I want, not that I don't like, but I want to know more about. So, I think that it's only fair, without District Two, to look into it. I think we do need more information, and I hope that it would be tabled.
Is that a motion to table?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I am going along with the tabling. So, we have five votes for tabling, and that is enough. So, we have five votes for tabling, and that is enough.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I just wanna make one comment.
I'm sorry, that's the end.
Could I make a comment?
That passed, the tabling passed, correct?
I just wanna address...
That's correct. The tabling, table has passed.
Well, we voted on it, right? It's tabled.
Yeah, concluded.
Okay.
The tabling with the amendment has passed.
Yes, the item as amended has been laid on the table and will remain on the table until its body removed from the table.
Can I ask a point of clarification regarding the tabling? Just to be clear, you would need six votes to pass, even though there's only eight of us, correct?
That's correct, because both your rules, Section Roman numeral XX, Roman numeral 20, as well as Section 2.2.8 of the Charter, both require six affirmative votes to pass resolutions. This being a resolution, you're required to have that six, minimum of six votes to pass it.
Thank you.
Now, can I make a comment?
I'm afraid the next thing is a motion to adjourn, since there's nothing...
But we're here. If you wanna speak, I think it would be good.
Beth, just, Beth, let her comment.
Yeah, please.
I just wanna make a comment because I happened to find an old copy of The Star dating back to March. And at that time, the mayor predicted that if we didn't join New Haven, of course, all hell would break loose, but our fees would go up, and it was a very good thing.